All right, I'd like to call to order the Commission for Women's Meeting for July 18th, 2019. Let's please have a roll call.
Okay. So, am I supposed to not go through all these names?
Go through all the names and then we'll decide.
Okay.
Albertina Allen. Bonita Schaeff. Here. Dahlia. Here. Joanne Inquest. Kay Hill. Christina Isabel here. Nicole Florrick. Charlene Libsy. Fay Moore. Here. Councilperson Ashawn. It's Patrick. Great. All right, so we don't have a quorum right now, so we will not be able to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. If you'd like to take a look at them and see if there's any editing needed, I will take note of that, but we'll have to approve it once we have a quorum. We'll spend a couple of minutes looking at that.
Joanne Inquest.
Yeah, yeah, Joanne Inquest is here.
Joanne Inquest.
All right, good. We now have a quorum.
Oh, good.
That's what we say. All right. All right, we'll look over the minutes, and so now we have a quorum, we'll be able to approve them. So decide. I'll fix the names.
I motion that we accept the minutes, I don't see any corrections.
I just see a speller of my name on the page.
Yeah, my name's spelled wrong, took it after I.
Well, we should fix it.
Yeah, we'll fix it. Yeah, I now have all the correct spellings right here in front of me, so I'll be able to fix the spellings here.
Right, I don't have an H in my room, so it's just.
No, it's spelled right down here.
Well, unless page three. Page three is spelled differently, so we might have to.
Well, but I vary, you know.
Yeah. Second.
Second.
Sorry.
Yes, I did.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Treasurer's report, so Charlene did email me, and she said she requested the information from the comptroller's office, but she did not get it in a timely amount of time before she had to leave out of town. So she could not present the report because she doesn't have a computer out of town. She says she can confirm our current balance is $24,001,6671, and then she will complete her report over the weekend. Like I said, she did not get the information early enough, even though it was requested. So I'm just letting you know what the balance is, and then we'll have to approve the budget at night. All business is the Women in the Arts event, and first, I think I'd like to have Christina update us on the -- we had now two meetings since the last one, but let's talk about the first one, where we have notes for, we have a separate packet of notes for that.
Yes, okay.
Just highlight them.
Yeah, I'm just gonna highlight where we are now.
You don't want to use these notes from the other meeting?
Those are from the June 6th meeting?
Right, because we haven't discussed these.
We did last meeting.
Oh, we did, we just didn't have it. All right, yeah, sorry. Sorry.
You do not have the meetings from our meeting this week.
Correct.
So I will submit those. Bonnie, Joanne, Dahlia, and I have met twice, actually. We met on Monday, the 16th, to discuss the Women Making a Difference fundraiser, which we have now returned to celebrating Women in the Arts as the title. Yesterday, we went to look at two different facilities. We looked at Traditions, which was a really lovely event space, they've done a good job renovating that space, and we also looked at Barker Mansion. So after, we basically decided we need to see the location to really determine what this event was going to be, even though we had a meeting on June 6th, where we were had a different focus. We got very excited about the idea of the celebrating Women in the Arts again, and doing something at the Doones Theater in October, and creating a more of a performance, a variety show, make the event more fun, try to engage more people in that, and this is something that I brainstormed on yesterday, not something that we've talked about yet, but I was wondering if we do do a $45, you know, fee for this, or, you know, ticket price, and we have food and a cash bar, what if we opened the show up at a lower price, so then we had more people that could come? The Doones Theater can seat 300 or something, let's, you know, engage more people in this opportunity, so like $45 VIP, has the food, you know, cash bar, and then at the showtime, we open it up for $20 tickets for show only. It's just an idea.
Would we talk it over with them?
And so I'm in conversation with Jeffrey. He's really busy, and actually, I have a show this weekend, so we're gonna talk again. He's very excited about the idea. This way, if we do open that $20 ticket, say we get some kids to perform, maybe, since we have funded so many K-12 education programs with Michigan City High School, why don't we have the Michigan City High School, some, like, perform, choir, or, you know, get more people involved in the performance, as well as, like, Judy Joseph, Bunny Fisher, Michigan City Moves will do some, a dance thing, so Soul Steppers will be involved.
So are you thinking that the bar would be put away before we have the show? Because, again, I'm, you know, bringing up the fact that most activities do not occur with kids, if there's alcohol.
Any theater, well, has a bar, and does not serve to kids.
Right, they don't serve to kids.
Correct.
Usually, if it is a school function of any kind.
It's not a school function, you can't have.
No, no, excuse me. If you're going to have some, you know, like, the choir or something, or you said, you know, a performance by kids from the school. I know the Boys and Girls Club, we never permit.
Right, the alcohol has to be separate, you have to have it some kind of way where they are nowhere near.
I don't think the performers would be.
But they're performing.
Yeah, they wouldn't be where the rest of the crowd is.
In the public. I mean, and.
What are you talking, food and alcohol?
I wonder. We would do a cocktail hour, that would have food, right? That is the VIP time, right? Then those tickets are $45.
Okay.
And then, for an hour, hour and a half, however long we feel, then doors open, then there's a show.
Okay.
And then the show, we get to talk about how, what the Women's Commission does, how much funding we've given out, and then we have these performances, we make it a really engaging, fun event, and not just an average, ordinary fundraiser.
Right.
We're really focusing on people here that are really making interesting art happen.
So by the time the kids arrive, the alcohol time is over, and the alcohol is out of.
The food and everything will be over by the time the actual event begins.
And they can rope it off, they rope off that area already, the bar area.
Correct, because it's back.
Already, because that's at the far end of the porch, and then.
They could probably come in another way, too.
Yeah, there's, plus, there's a door into the house, soon as you get in, you know, you could go through, it's only a little skinny door, but you could go in there, and then you're in the left aisle of the house, of the audience, so it could be that that's roped off, that if you're only there for the show, you go reg in that door, and then you're, you know, 50 feet or so from, at least, from the bar.
But I don't think, the performers aren't gonna be part of the.
The crowd.
Exactly, so they're being.
But their parents could come.
Yeah.
I mean, they're paying $20 a ticket, I know the kids will pay $20 a ticket, so I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know these things about the, you know, because I'm in the theater world, there's always the open bar, all the time, you know, and the bar maintains who's.
This is Indiana, too.
Well, explain a little bit more about the show that we're planning to have, like, I don't know if we all know about the structure of the whole show.
The structure of the show.
Well, before, it was gonna be three awards, and now we're gonna give one award, is that correct?
So, yeah, okay, so now, the show is.
I mean, the whole event.
The citizen, people giveaway, instead of focusing, we decided it was too challenging to focus in a short amount of time on giving awards to people in Health and Human Services, Entrepreneurship, Environmental, all those categories, because we don't have a call to find the best people, or to, you know, really reach the community, to, you know, get feedback and assistance in finding who's really doing vibrant work as an entrepreneur here in Michigan City. So we've kind of gonna narrow that down to just a citizenship award. And so we will have this citizenship award, will be part of this evening of entertainment. We'll have an emcee that will kind of introduce each piece, and then Dahlia will probably talk, and say, talk about all the good work that we do at the Women's Commission. I would really love to have a video introduction of whoever the person is for the citizenship award, am I allowed to say who we're considering?
I don't think you should.
Yeah, at this point.
Okay, terrific. So then we would get interviews with people that have worked with them, and how they've been involved in this, and maybe interview them as well.
And that's gonna be on September?
October 19th is the date that we're looking at.
Okay. Did you at least get a possibility for that date from the Doones Theater?
Yes, he just, I sent him the date, and he hasn't confirmed yes or no yet.
Good.
He said he was pretty busy, and they're putting in a new sound enhancement install all day, so, but he was very excited.
So they're open to everything, they really are, yeah, absolutely.
So then my understanding is that after the awards are presented, and a little recap of the Women's Commission, then we're gonna have performers of all different kinds, music, dance, spoken word.
Spoken word would be great, and that is not something I know that's going on in Michigan City, but it's got to be going on somewhere.
It is. I don't know any main groups, but I do know some spoken word artists.
Right, that would be great, I think, if we can.
For the 19th, I would see if I could find someone, or I would see if you plug it on.
Yeah, if anyone wants to send additional names of performers, because basically, you gotta see who's available, too.
At the last one, Carnessa Carnes, I don't know if she's still around, but she had some, if she writes poetry, so, do you wanna see that?
Right, something like that would be nice, I think.
Exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, right.
So are you saying that there are two level of tickets?
Potentially. Potentially.
Okay, you haven't decided for sure, yeah.
Yeah, because I feel like we shouldn't just be reaching out to the people that normally go to all the fundraising events in the city. We really want people to know what the Women's Commission is about, that we are reaching out, that we want people to know that they can come to us if there's an interesting opportunity that we can support, we wanna support it. And so if we can bring in people at another level of ticket price, then we might be able to have some more impact. I mean, we have great impact, actually, if looking at, that we know, we have great impact, but we could do more.
Yeah, great idea.
Oh, but there's a lot to do, to get this going, so, some of the things that I was brainstorming on today, I was just looking at the budget of what those costs would be, because we should get a photographer, we should get a video person, and then a video person to do the interview things, so I'll kind of do a rough estimate of what that could be, and then maybe we can.
Divide up the duties, yeah, we're gonna need help with all kinds of different things, yeah.
Yeah. And it is fairly, you know, it's happening fast. September 19th would be fast, I mean, October.
That was a good idea, though, with the two, maybe get more people to come.
Yeah, and people should know that normally it's $20 to get to the Doones Theater, so, you know, maybe that'll open it up to people who'll be more willing in the future to attend it.
I mean, why not create a good variety show that happened every year, you know? I mean, it would be really exciting to get the young people involved in something like that, as well as people here in the community.
Did you see the last one? Because we did have.
No, I was, I was performing.
Well, the last two times, we've had the, you know, the Steppers, and they've always performed, but the high schools have wonderful.
I mean, we'll still have the Soul Steppers, but I think we can open it up, which would then make more people wanna come.
Another point is, I think we were planning to pay the performers a stipend, so that, you know, they don't have to do the volunteer time, so I think that's a good call, is to give them something for doing this.
Yeah, so that's where we are at the moment.
Thank you, so are we plan, do we have another date where we're gonna get together and talk about this?
We should maybe do that, yes.
Well, you know.
Or we just wait for the next meeting in August.
The retreat, the retreat.
Okay, the retreat.
Yeah, the retreat's coming up.
Okay.
And by that time, you may have contacted some more people.
Yep.
May have been able to take some of those steps off your list.
Yep.
And let us know what needs to happen, because sometimes it's amazing, if you make some phone calls, you could check some things off, feels really good.
Yep, so maybe we'll have kind of a confirmation from theater, and an idea if they're charging us anything, as well as maybe a few performer commitments, is what I'll look for.
And the theater could do a small thing.
That's what we're.
Yeah, for sure.
They're happy to do something.
Yeah, they'll just be.
It's a good show.
Finish up a musical, actually.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, very nice. The Women's Equality Day, so Joanne, just recap what that is.
We have made some changes, too, Jan. Equality Day is the day we celebrate the passage of the 19th Amendment, and the fact that women can vote, so it's a major day, and we've celebrated it, oh goodness, I'm trying to remember, is this the fifth year? It's been, we've done it consistently.
Says we've started.
And this year, and it gets bigger each time, we have a good turnout. The Scartozzi, I did contact Scartozzi's, and they were able to find, because I was trying to get this information from Shar, you know, she's out of town, even though we are communicating, and so I do have a list of the things that we served last time, and so I, and I'll present a budget now, so I can get approval to move on. At this point, I think you're going, I think we need to get in the habit of getting our budgets approved before we move, and so I think we can move ahead on this. I've changed the program a great deal, after checking into, and I had read Working is, you know, it's a famous Chicago book, actually, so I had read it before, and I really saw some possibilities, because I knew it had changed to musical, and I thought it was going to work out just fine, but it's too much work, it really is, it's too much work to transfer all that over here. So what I did instead was, I thought about what organizations we have in Michigan City that are pretty much female started, and the one that came to mind, of course, is Save the Doones, amazing history of that organization coming out of the south side of Chicago, and the women were really the founders of Save the Doones, and have had, historically have had very fine executive directors, female executive directors, there were a couple of men, male directors as well, but we're back to a female, and she's absolutely outstanding, Natalie Johnson, young woman, very well educated, and very well spoken, and very dynamic, and I just feel that there couldn't be a better speaker. At this time, I think it'll work out just fine, she's very excited. It's September 4th, it's the same as I had last time, September 4th, that has not changed. And I think we're pretty much set up, I did, I do have, I'm trying to cut back on cost as much as possible, because we have a lot of things ahead of us, and we do provide the luncheon, and looking over that, in fact, the only thing I have to purchase at this time are plates, I think I might have something I can contribute to, so I don't have to do that much purchasing.
To recap, it's gonna be at the Lebesnik Center.
It'll be at the Lebesnik Center.
And it's a free cost, free, free to anyone to attend.
Yes, it's 11:30 to 1 o'clock, and it's not just for women, we've always had a number of men attending through the years, I know my husband always looked forward to it, as well as other men were there, and it's always been a delightful time. Sometimes there are, you know, there were some interesting, funny programs, and mixed programs of various kinds, this time it will be a speaker, and if you've ever heard Natalie, you know that she'll do a great job. Let's see, yeah, I think we'll have just about the same menu we had last time, and probably, and I will get table coverings, I will borrow those, so we don't have to pay for them, they're expensive if you rent them, and so I think, I called the church today, I'll get those. They say we can seat 100, it's more like 80, I think 100 is kind of crowded in that room. They said 10.
It is crowded.
Do you remember 10 to a table thing? I remember eight, I don't remember 10.
Eight, normally it's eight, but it's still crowded.
Yeah, I know it was crowded last time, and we had about 80 people last time, I think. So, and I could present a more exact budget if you want, but I would like a motion to be able to spend about $1,200, which I think is a very good price for considering all we're doing. In fact, we paid that the first year, I remember, about five years ago.
What did we spend last year?
I don't know, I don't know the total, I don't have it. I do know that the food was $984 last year. And that included dessert and beverage.
And then the additional money, what would that go to?
I said that would be the, you know, the limit, in case we have more people.
I don't remember, do we ask people to RSVP then?
Yes.
But of course, people will show up without that, correct?
We did, we had that last time as well, we had some people show up.
So that brings me to like electronic.
Yeah.
Bit of a temptation.
Invitation.
It doesn't have, it could be.
It could be a little, whatever. Form, or they just say they're coming.
Oh, that one here. Oh, the 200, no, the 200 for the Lebesnik Center.
Well, not to exceed, so you're requesting.
How do they get 35? That's for. Oh, oh, I see, I was gonna say.
Joanne, we could just say not to exceed $1,200, is that what you're saying?
That's what I said.
She wants to, so not to exceed, she's probably gonna spend it also. Is there a second?
Last year, it was 11:84.
Did you make your own motion?
Nope, I did not, I said I would like someone to.
Someone make the motion, please?
Would not be appropriate for me to make a motion.
So I'll make the motion for the 2019 Women's Equality Day budget, not to exceed $1,200.
Two seconds. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will say the one thing that is bothering me is plastic bottles, plastic water. You know how diff, I have looked all over, you can't even get bottles that are not plastic of any kind. I looked at all kinds of drinks, it's ridiculous.
We can look into this, like, I can probably bring 12 mugs, like, I am not kidding, I have so many mugs, I get mugs from all kinds of things, like, three mugs at this event, that event, if we all brought 10 mugs, and people can just pour water into it, that would be fine with me.
Mugs, I'm.
Well, I have, I have a ton of coffee mugs, you know, just like bring, we all bring glasses that we're all gonna use.
I was thinking pitchers, maybe.
But where are you gonna pour it into, is what I'm saying.
Pour it into.
Pour it into.
Paper cups?
Plastic glasses, or?
Yeah, I was thinking a pitcher on a table, on each table, so we wouldn't.
Straw, so.
No, no.
What are you pouring it into?
Into cups.
Glasses.
Cups, and you can get paper cups.
All right.
I, you can get recyclable cups.
Absolutely. We could probably rent pitchers and cable guns.
I have about four myself, I think.
I think I have two.
And we also, you and I both have the dispenser, the water dispensers.
I don't have one of those, but I have 20 glasses, that I only used once for that Syrian dinner.
Oh, I have.
Lots of back in the box, so I can bring those.
I have, I have lots of glasses.
That's what I'm saying, we all have some, I'm saying, I.
Oh, when you say mugs, though, I didn't know what.
Well, I had coffee mugs, and I have like so many of them, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not worried about the drinking utensils.
Okay.
I'm worried about.
Paper, yeah, I don't wanna get plastic bottles either, if we can avoid that, that would be great, so.
And that was on, that was on the list.
What's the other, how many pitchers we have?
But then I have to get, we have to fill them, and bring ice. The beverages are always the hardest part, anytime I've ever planned anything.
Yeah.
The beverages are always the most cumbersome things to deal with.
So the Scartozzi's doesn't supply us?
Yeah, they supply bottles of water, plastic bottles of water.
Okay, no question.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Well, if we're doing that, we should make a point to list that on the, you know, that this is, I don't know, because that seems like a big statement on, you know, plastic reduction, so.
Well, I always mention that, if the league goes without plastic, I always mention it to the group, we've had candidate forms, where we did not supply plastic water bottles, and we had a dispenser of water, and I went out of my way to explain why it was that way.
You have to do that, it's just a habit. Yeah, well, so we approved your budget, so I think that's good, and since that's coming up before our other event, so we need to talk a little bit about the invitations, and the invites, and et cetera.
For my group?
Yes, for the Women's Equality.
That's all, that's just about ready, and that's going in email.
To?
We have a list of people from last year.
Correct.
Plus, the league has over 200 lists.
That list is gonna have to get populated, and, you know, we have to carefully email, because if you do 200 people on a list, it might, you know, not.
Well, it doesn't have to all be at once, yeah, sort of thing.
And then, if you want me to design an RSVP form on the Google Doc, so that we can, you know, RSVP.
That would be good, why don't you wait till we get, Shar's working on the flyer. We, I've changed it like three times, and she will have access to a computer tomorrow.
I can have a Google RSVP, remember how I just send the link, and people click on it, and then they just say they're coming?
Right.
And that way, we know who's coming, and email.
Last time I was, when we did this last time, though, I didn't get that information right away, and I really need it right away.
I can make the Google Doc before you finish the flyer.
But I didn't get who responded to it, I didn't find out who responded.
Well, I can put you on the, you get the responses.
Okay. Well, it's listed differently on the flyer, so I'll let you know.
What do you mean? Oh, I see.
Yeah, we have the response differently on the flyer.
So you have the responses on the flyer going to you, directly to you.
I think you should have them.
Yeah, I use my phone and my email address.
If you are emailing the people?
I have a line specifically for the league, I do not use that phone, except for.
If we are sending this by email, it's very easy to click on that RSVP link, so I think that should be included in the flyer and in the email, and if they choose to call you instead, or email you instead, that's fine, do you know what I mean? I think, if it's an electronic method, if it's not something, you have to type all kinds of letters, numbers, and symbols, if you just click on the link.
No, I know, we did that last year, we did it last year for something in the league, and as I said, I never knew who was coming.
Okay, well, we'll have to work on that, all right. You can have access to the results, you know, so, all right.
And maybe we could ask for email addresses to.
Okay, is that it for the Equality Day, then? Thanks.
I think so.
Under New Business, all I have listed right now is that our annual retreat, so it's funny, I don't, you might not know this, but every year, the Women's Commission used to have an annual retreat at Kathy Dennis's house, which was really nice, and we'd spend a few hours there just planning the year's programs, like a solid time, like a workshop, and so, you know, I do not live like that, and I thought it would be really nice for us to do this at the Barker Mansion, so I have reserved a room, and, you know, I would love to promote the Barker Mansion a little more, they have free meeting rooms for all kinds of community groups, and it's really nice, I mean, you're in the Barker Mansion, you're in a historic place, and they love to have, especially city groups, like that meet.
Do you have a strategist or someone coming in for that, or is it just like?
No, we have plenty to work on, because we're gonna work on our next year's plan, like. what topics are we gonna work on, what, what our focus is going to be, I don't think we need that, and I also was going to arrange for, somewhere in between, I mean, we're gonna go some outside, if it's really nice, we could spend a lot of time outdoors, and then I was also going to arrange a tour of the mansion for everybody, so, during the thing, just kind of break it up a little bit, so it's not just, you know, sitting in one place for that long. Uh, so, I'm just kinda letting you know, it's from 9 to 1, it's at Barker Mansion, downstairs in the Purdue Room, I believe it is, and, uh, we'll have access to the garden, and we'll go on a little tour of that as well. So I hope everyone can make it, because I asked, I think, last meeting, and that seemed to be a good date, and that's what I went for. Oh, and I have the contract, then we want to see the contract, but I just had to sign that, you know...
Yeah, I have a copy on the car.
Yeah, so, um, that's about it. Delia, are we bringing food? We've always had a pigeon. Yes, I'm sorry, I should mention this. I, yeah, I'd like to have kind of a little bit of a potluck, so if everyone would bring something small to eat, I mean, it's not a really long period of time, so we're not gonna be voraciously hungry, but maybe a snack. So maybe a snack, if everyone would bring something small to, uh, you know, contribute, not, you know, finger food or something, not too messy, 'cause there, there is a kitchen, but I don't think we're gonna have access to the full kitchen, so...
And you can't use that sink either, it's, it's a little bit difficult, I remember that, you have to bring everything in ready to go.
And if I want to bring a refillable water bottle, oh, and then if you bring your own water, so I might bring a couple of gallons of drinking water, they actually do have a little bit of a problem with their pipes, being one of the oldest buildings in the city, so they, they don't drink the water from the tap, so if you would be mindful, I would remind people, I might bring a couple of gallons of drinking water, so I can refill your refillable bottles.
Maybe we should bring our own coffee, too, or...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll figure something out like that, so, all right, that's about it. So, uh, we have council liaisons coming, so Sean, do you have anything you would like to share?
I like this time, so...
All right. Did that person we nominated for the youth commission ever...
Well, I was just asking Fay about it, so, uh, I'm not sure if she's been sworn in yet, but that would be the next step, and, uh, all the paperwork gets into clerk's office and we'll be getting that meeting scheduled, the, the first meeting scheduled and then...
You're talking about the young lady? I did my best, I did my best, because when she left here, she was very concerned about how she was going to get everything in and if she was gonna be able to do it, so I tried, I called several times. I spoke with her sister.
Yeah, I think, I think everything's great, and, uh, I know that they received a letter from, from you guys as far as, uh...
They received a letter saying who it was.
That you were pointing her.
Right, and I understand how challenging it is, at least for me, if it's a sustainability commission, we have, you know, three, you know, middle school and high school, and all their email bounces because they're, they can't use their high school email, so we're trying to get, you know, another email address for them, so, and in summer, so it's very hard to get in touch with them, so, I totally agree, all right.
Gotta make a note to get, uh, different email.
Try to ask them for that, 'cause I've had trouble, 'cause the school does not allow anyone to email the students at their school email address. All right, Commissioner comments, does anybody have anything, Fay?
Yes. I'm gonna go around my, what did you say, yes?
But, go ahead, if you want.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Okay.
I don't think I do either. Yeah, I mean, just that the Art and Nature, um, series opens this Saturday, um, which we help support the film project. You got it. So it's the, the, it's gonna be amazing, the film projected on the barn is just absolutely, um, beautiful, and we have performers from South Shore Dance Alliance performing, um, wonderful young students.
Hi.
Hello.
So, I'm really excited and I hope you guys can come. It is just a suggested donation, so anyone can come for free as well.
Anybody else, Bonnie, anybody?
Nothing.
Oh, yeah, you can...
One more?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Sick as a man.
Okay, Delia, may I?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, you see, yeah, I, well, listen, um, I received a call, I guess it was like, it was right after I saw Pat, too, Pat Boy, and she gave me a whole box of league stuff, but this is something in addition, it was dropped off at the clerk's office, and they contacted me to see if I could pick it up, um, I was gonna be in the building anyway, I had another meeting here that night, but this is, uh, from the General Assembly, and it was actually signed off, it's a resolution, um, that was signed off on, in, um, April, if I'm not mistaken, the date is on here, and, um, it's, um, a resolution, um, celebrating International Women's Day and recognizing the essential role of women in history during Women's History Month, and all the signatures are here, it's a very lovely document, very beautifully printed and presented, so, um, I'm not quite certain what we'd like to do with this, but it's something worth framing, I just don't know where we could keep it.
Is it directed towards our commission or just like a general...
Well, the note on it said, Women's Commission, Joanne Anquist, with my name spelled wrong.
Well...
So, I don't know, but Pat did not mention anything to me when I saw her, when she, when she gave me the...
If we get her framed, we put it up here in City Hall.
That's what I was thinking, you know? What do you think?
I would say put it here somewhere.
Yeah, I'll pass it around, it's really quite beautiful, and all the signatures are there. So, I don't know, should I contact the mayor and see if, or something, or...
Yeah, let's find out if they will hang it here, and then maybe we can, uh, drop it off to get framed and, uh, hang it up. Yeah, let's find out first if that's, you know, how, what the process is, there's a room on this wall, but I don't know, I think we just have to ask...
There's a locker panel there that I could do, that we could use for the 19th Amendment celebration.
Mm-hmm. There's a whole history of women in this state included on this.
Including people we know, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, that's very nice. So why don't, why, you hang onto it then, for, for that reason, and then we can inquire if the city wants to, for the history part of it. I was wondering, too, if it's something that we could use next March, too, during International Women's Day, you know, make a formal, you know, formal presentation of it or something, maybe Pat, oh no, that's during the session, but, but...
You mean for International Women's Day?
For, in, in March.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, March 8th.
I would say show it off for every chance you get.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, next year is gonna be such a big year.
Yeah.
For the league, it's 100 years, and the league locally, it's going to be 100 years the year after. Our league, our league is almost 100 years old.
Wow.
It was, it was the Michigan City League at that time, and not the, uh, Fort County.
Hey, any other Commissioner comments?
We're at Commissioner comments.
Okay.
We're all just done.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, well, I will entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
So, I'll second it.
All right. We'll see you on August 15th then.
August 10.
August 10. Uh-oh. Is it 10?
Don't forget that. Well, August 10 for our retreat.
Sorry.
You mean the retreat.
For the meeting.
The retreat is the next.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'm paying attention, yeah, next meeting is the 15th.